The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient Woods Hole Terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, January 8th, 2024, and the time is 6:30. I would ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would ask all of you to please silence your cellphones and to please notify me as the chair if you are making any video or audio recording of this open session meeting. And the placement and operation of any recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Okay. Any proclamations tonight? I don't believe we have one. Okay. Any recognitions from the board? Mr. Brown?
I didn't witness it or attend the event, but I guess the fire department did a really excellent job of knocking down the fire at the weak block across the street. All the people that were nearby said it was very impressive, the response. And thanks to all the joining communities for joining in, Joint Base Cape Cod and Mashpee and Bourne. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Mescalley?
I'd just like to recognize the DPW and what a good job they did clearing the streets. You know, the first snow of the summer is always, the winter is always a little tricky. So, you know, they did a great job. I was out in the midst of it. It was cleaned up pretty quickly, so just want to recognize the good job they did.
Thank you, Mr. Mescalley. Any other recognitions? Okay, we'll move into announcements, and I have two. The first is that we've had some additional interest in the position on the Falmouth Housing Authority Board, so we have extended the application deadline to January 19th, and we will continue to have the joint meeting with FHA on January 29th. And then my second announcement is the Department of Conservation and Recreation Notice of Proposed Land Acquisition. They are looking for a 120-day waiver of the notice period, and they've asked the board to grant that waiver. Is there any questions from the board on that? It's been in your packet? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
It didn't really give an explanation as to the reason, but I imagine it's for access to that pond that's there that leads to Charles River. Is that, is that the reason for the request?
Says here that the proposed use for the property will be protected open space, according to the announcement, the email that we received.
Interesting. I don't recall having seen them do that before, but of course, I imagine they have. But I just, first time I've seen that.
Any comment?
Sorry, you don't recall them seeking the board approval?
Well, coming in acquiring land for open space, just on their own initiative. Interesting.
They, right, they usually do it in partnership, and this is also a partnership.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the 120-day waiver statement unless anyone opposes it. Okay, pursuant 301 CMR 51.071B, the Falmouth Select Board hereby agrees to waive the 120-day notice period as required by said section as to a parcel of land of approximately 2.27 acres in the town of Falmouth, shown on Exhibit A attached here, too, in which the Department of Conservation and Recreation is considering acquiring an interest. Such waiver was approved by the Select Board vote at the meeting held on today. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
I have a second then.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the 120-day waiver statement. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Okay, we will move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not and will not participate in any discussion of your topic. Is anyone here for public comment? Yes, Ms. Rhodes, we'll start with you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rhodes. I am deputy captain for precinct number eight, and I actually had a prepared statement that I don't need to speak because you opened the rec for the housing authority, so I thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Yes. Are, oh, you're together? Oh, okay.
Did you think anything different? Good evening. Stephen Cohen, 597 West Falmouth Highway.
Todd Taylor from 611 West Falmouth Highway.
So, we've stood before this microphone on numerous occasions over the last number of years, speaking to the importance of fire protection, especially in the West Falmouth community. We thank you for your continued support, and it's not why we're here tonight. We're here tonight to acknowledge the great work of the Falmouth Fire Department a week ago tonight with the fire in the downtown area. As many of you know, I served as state fire marshal for the Commonwealth for better than two decades, and in my capacity of that, I traveled throughout the state responding to major fires and emergencies. And many of them were tragic in the sense that part of a community was lost due to great fires. It might be a mill building that talked about how that community participated in the birth of a certain product or the growth of a part of the state. It might be a school building, could be a church, or it could be an iconic downtown building. And in many cases, I have to tell you, due to the difficulty of fighting fires in those buildings that are old and not made, not built with the new building codes we have today, fire can take hold of the building. And in many cases, what you see is an empty shell, an excavator the next day, and then a parking lot. And we didn't see that here a week ago tonight. We saw a very well-developed professional team of firefighters, well-trained, with good equipment, backed up by their mutual aid partners, coming here and doing a great job. In the vocabulary of the firefighters, of the fire service, it was a hell of a stop. And I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to our fire department here in town for the continued support and protection of the property, and we in the future will be able to continue to enjoy the iconic building in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ben Weiss, and I live at 175 Lake Shore Drive, and I'm here just to say that I'm excited about the project with the nursing home down Main Street. And the reason why is because in the two and a half years that I lived here, I moved approximately like six.
Speak to the board, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I moved six times due to the seasonality of the housing here. And I know that a lot of my colleagues, I should also say I'm a mechanical engineer at HOE, and a lot of my colleagues who are about my age getting out of college struggle with a similar problem. So, I just wanted to voice my excitement of that project and its creativity, and I hope that we'll not only see that move forward, but see other projects like it in the near term. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McConerty, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening. Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. Just wanted to give the board a recap of the previous coastal storms that we've had over the, over the holidays. There's been several strong coastal storms that hit our south coast over the holiday season and brought a lot of damage to Surf Drive, brought a lot of damage to Monot Road and Monot Beach. We were working overtime on the roadways, keeping the roadways clean, but one project in particular was Monot Beach. Basically, it, the coastal storm took away the dune that was on the Monot West, and it rode a portion of the parking lot to basically a two-and-a-half-foot drop onto the beach. Public Works, last week, we had four 10-wheel trucks running with a loader on the beach, and each truck holds about 17 tons of sand, and we had four trucks running for two days. So that was 70, it was about 74 trucks, which equals out to about 1,400 tons of sand. So with this upcoming project, with the bridge that we're going to be replacing and the nourishment on the beach and the realignment of the groynes out there, we're hoping that's going to be able to alleviate a lot of that storm damage. If you stand on the beach and you look out towards Davisville Extension, you can see where the waves in the water comes right out from the west and drives right towards that beach, and that's the, that's the parking lot that gets all the damage. The east parking lot didn't have any damage at all, it's the west parking lot, but it, it took a tremendous hit in that, during those storms. We're going to keep on putting nourishment on that, in the parking lot as we go, but that project alone, just the materials alone, was about $25,000. You can see that it really goes up the more storms that hit in that area, so I think it's a sign of come in the future. But I think as we're working with this bridge and on nourishment of the beach and the realignment of those groynes, this should help out tremendously. We're hoping to put that bridge project out after Labor Day this year.
Yay.
Thank you, Mr. McConerty. Mr. Moriarty, you're up.
I just want to comment at the end of the month in Hyannis. Put on by Green Ocean from Rhode Island, the Fisherman Association, all the people who are going to be affected by this. It should be very interesting.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dave Moriarty, Falmouth resident. I'm just here tonight just to remind everyone, tomorrow night at 6:30, the Planning Board's having a meeting, and it has to do with the Wind Energy Systems Bylaw that has protected us all since 2017. No one's been bankrupt, run out of town. It's worked 100%.
Mr. Moriarty, please speak to the board.
Really, do you have a bylaw that works 100%? And the Planning Board is planning on changing that bylaw, by the way. So if you have any property along the route of the proposed cable or the proposed electrical plants, I suggest you attend the meeting tomorrow night. The Planning Board meeting is very important for your survival here in Falmouth. And secondly, there's a Close the Wind Summit being held at the end of the month in Hyannis, and good folks from Green Ocean and Rhode Island, up and down the east coast are going to be coming. The Fisherman Association's going to be there. I encourage any local elected official to attend, especially if they're, they're going to be running next year, because these are the people who are really affected by these wind factories, and this, these are the real people that, that our elected officials need to be listening to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Richards at the Falmouth Housing Authority, and I just wanted to come and extend a personal thank you to Mr. Renshaw Town Manager for coming out and walking our properties. It was a really great afternoon, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes.
Hi, my name's Dan Perreacane. I am a teacher at the Lawrence School, and I'm coming because I believe tonight you all are voting on the budget for fiscal year 2025, and I think there's some changes in there that could be.
That's on the agenda, sir. Do you want to wait and, and you need to wait and address it when we talk about the budget.
Oh, okay. All right.
Public comment is only for things that are not on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay? Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll move into committee. Anyone? I'm sorry. Okay. We will move into committee interviews, and tonight we have an interview for the Cape Cod Commission, and we have an applicant, John Drooly. Mr. Drooly, would you step up, please? Is there anything you would like to share with us that was not on your application?
I don't think there is. I'm John Drooly. I'm a member of the Planning Board, elected officials, and I think it'd be great for the town to have Representative Cape Cod Commission that's on the Planning Board.
Any questions? Mr. Mescalley?
No, no, no questions, other than to say I know Mr. Drooly very, very well, his work on the CPC as well as the Planning, the Planning Board, and as the most recent member of the Cape Cod Commission pointed by this town, I know how important that job is, and I know Mr. Drooly's experience and his qualifications, probably better than mine were, honestly. And I think he would be a wonderful candidate for, for this position, and I would move his appointment.
I would second that, and also I would say I follow Mr. Drooly's work on the zoning board as well as the Planning Board, and I think he's well-suited for this position, so I think he'll do a great job for us. So I would second that appointment.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to appoint John Drooly to the Cape Cod Commission to an unexpired term ending 4/24/24. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that is correct. We did some research. Cape Cod Commission has kind of an odd cycle of their terms. They expire April 24th. If the board so chooses tonight to appoint Mr. Drooly, we would, at a subsequent meeting, we would reappoint, and that would carry through April 24th of 2027. That's my understanding.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will move into our public hearings. Mr. Zelinski?
Madam Chair, the Select Board of the town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing as required by the Select Board naming policy for public facilities and places to solicit comments from the public on the request to add a plaque on the bandshell on, on the Falmouth Music and Arts Pavilion, naming the bandshell the Lynn Whitehead Bandshell. Comments may be sent via email to selectboard@falmouthma.gov. The public hearing will be held on Monday, January 8th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. Nancy Robbins, Taylor, Chair.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on up. And the board has all of the information in your packet, and I'm assuming that you've all had an opportunity to read the information, and if you have any questions of the applicant, if you'd like to introduce yourself, that would be great.
I'm Jack Whitehead. We live on Seventh Grateri Lane.
Okay. Questions from the board on this application?
Just a question, Dr.
Yes.
In your research, or, you know, historically, was the bandshell actually named in honor of Dr. Wolf back, back when?
I don't know, but we put a plaque, the town awarded a plaque that was put up there. I don't know if they went through this process or not, to tell you the truth. Oscar had served as manager from the mid-'60s until the late-'70s at least, and so the plaque was put up. Lynn, my wife actually, you know, took, organized it, and, and he was very touched, I must say. Yeah. So I don't know for sure, but there was a, there is a plaque.
And it will continue, obviously.
Well, the plaque, we recommend that that plaque be put on the side to tell about the previous structure. That structure was built in '71. Lynn and I started on the band in, in 1972. The bandshell, that first structure was just being completed, and I hate to think of what it cost, probably $19,000. Yeah.
It's a great resource for the town, really.
It is. And, and you know that the Recreation Department, I believe you all saw the email from Bob Brown saying that they unanimously recommended this, and I believe that all of the emails that we have received regarding this application have been very positive. I don't believe we've received one negative.
Right. I really appreciated all the information that was in the packet regarding the history of the band and the bandshell and the way it's all managed. It was really very interesting. I had no idea the level of intricacy that was involved in keeping it going. I served on the building committee when we built that, and I was actually the person assigned to that bandshell project.
Oh, wow.
I do remember you.
Yeah, and Jack and I were going to volunteer to shingle the building because the budget was so tight, and then at the last minute, they found some money and they were able to get the carpenter to do it, the contractor to do it. I actually volunteered and built the shed because they were going to skip the shed, and we were like, you gotta have the shed. And so I went over there with one of my guys, and we framed it.
Oh, wow.
And then the contractor was able to, the town found some money and they continued on with the budget and to finish the siding and whatnot, so it's good. But we were not going to go without the shed, so.
Any other questions from the board before I look for public comment?
He answered my question about the Oscar Wolf signs staying up there. That's great, so thank you.
Any public comment on this matter before the board? Okay, I will enter. Do we?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
My name is Walter McLean. I live in West Falmouth, and I was the band manager at the time that the, the new bandshell was put up. And Lynn worked so very hard to get the money, first through finding, writing sorts of questions to people, and then asking the town for the money, and, and Lynn worked her heart out to get that. And I had a personal experience that was important just to tell you about. The old bandstand, I was playing my horn on the old bandstand, and Lynn said, "Back up, Walter, back up, you're too close to me." So I backed up. I ended up in the bushes. So I'm very grateful to have the new bandstand.
Thank you, Dr. McLean. Any other public comment?
Madam Chair, may I motion to close?
Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And? Oh, thank you, Angelae. I would like to, unless there's any further discussion amongst the board, I would like to move to approve the request to add a plaque to the band, to the bandshell on the Falmouth Music and Arts Pavilion, naming the bandshell the Lynn Whitehead Bandshell.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, I will do it by a roll call vote.
Zelinski, aye.
Mescalley, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Well done. Well deserved. Very well done, Dr. Whitehead. Okay, we will, I'm going to, if it's okay, I'm gonna move the hearings around. I'm going to take them out of order. We have an application for an alteration of premises of its wine and malt beverages restaurant license. Seafood Sam's of Falmouth, Inc., doing business as Seafood Sam's located 356 Palmer Ave., Falmouth, and I see that Attorney Lebhurst is here to represent the applicant.
Madam Chair, if I may, just before Mr. Leb, oh, you're gonna read?
Can I read the notice?
Yes, but, but hold on. Let me just, go ahead.
I, I just want to state for the record that, that I share an office with Attorney Lebhurst, but I don't think that, that that relationship will interfere at all with my voting on or deciding this application going forward.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Zelinski.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Seafood Sam's Falmouth, Inc., DBA Seafood Sam's has applied for an alteration of premises to its wine and malt beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 356 Palmer Ave., Falmouth, Mass. Hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, January 8th, 2024. It says 2023, but it's 2024, at 6:45. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov, per order of the Select Board Licensing Board. Nancy Robbins, Taylor, Edwin P. Zelinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert P. Mescalley.
Attorney Lebhurst?
Good evening. Attorney Christopher Lebhurst, 99 Town Hall Square, Falmouth. Hopefully you all have in front of you or notified today. I had requested a postponement or a continuance. This is a project that has been very long in the making. We, we started this last summer. We've had a number of plans drawn, revised. What we anticipated initially was a relatively benign request, some picnic tables to the southwest corner of this, this site. We have been through a, a process. I see Mr. Borcelli here tonight. I didn't know he was going to be here, but I think he's gone through three or four drafts of plans and so forth. I was made aware late last week, apparently the police had a concern about the proposal, and the concern is that, because there are some relatively new guidelines from the ABCC for outdoor seating, there, there, one of the things that is required is a, is a direct sightline from the building to the side where, where alcohol may be served, in this case, food and alcohol. We go through a parking lot a little bit, and, and I think the, the police are concerned about a little bit of obstruction, some cars in between the picnic tables and the building. We didn't initially anticipate it to be a significant issue, but apparently the police do, and that being the case, I think the board probably will. So I, I haven't even had an opportunity to, to speak to, to Mr. Borcelli about it. Like I said, this was brought to my attention, I think Friday or so last week. We'd like to sit down and see if we can't revise the plan and see if we can't make the police happy. I think it's worth noting, it seemed like everybody else signed off positively. We're not looking for more seats, nothing like that. We're taking seats out of the restaurant and putting them outside. It's a seasonal thing. It's, it's basically people on their bikes coming off the bike path who want to sit at a picnic table. But the ABC has their, ABCC has their rules. We want to comply, and we want to make sure that the police are satisfied. So I, my letter requested 60 days. I'm not really sure I need 60 days, 30 or 45 days or something like that, if the, if the board can squeeze us on the agenda. Just so you know, there's also additional oversight. The ZBA is involved in this. The site's under special permit. They're sort of waiting in the wings for us to, you know, see what happens with this process as well. So that's a lot of words coming out of my mouth for someone who's simply looking for a continuance.
I would move.
Go ahead.
I would move that we authorize the continuance for 60 days?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Town Council just advised, I believe it has to be within a 30-day period. Is that correct?
That's correct, or else there would be a constructive grant.
30 days is fine, is fine with us through, through you.
Unless you want to withdraw the application and?
We've come, we've gone a long, long way. You know, we, we hate to just simply go back to the drawing board again. We literally had plans drawn, I think, last July or August, and it's, we are really looking forward to trying to, to put this to bed if we can, and we've got to find a way to make sure the police are satisfied. So I think what we intend to do is revise plans, see if we can't have a sit-down with the police representatives, and see if we can't get a positive referral to you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Morris, so if, if they, they ask for a 30-day and they can't get it done in 30 days, can they reapply for another 30-day without causing a constructive grant?
So, no, they'd have to, you'd have to reopen the hearing and continue it again. You can have, you can have multiple continuances.
Right.
But you just have to be careful of that 30-day clock and have the next hearing date be within 30 days, and then you, you can keep working with the applicant and continue the hearing.
I can assure the board, if there's a question of signing and waiving anything that comes anywhere close to a constructive grant, we'd be more than happy to do that as well. We all have an opportunity to speak to Mike tonight and see what our timetable is, but I, I think we can get it done within the 30-day window.
Okay.
May I amend the motion?
I would amend the motion to grant the 30-day.
I would amend the motion to grant the thirty-day continuation.
I'd second Mr. Brown's motion. Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You do need to continue to a date certain.
Yes, and I, we, I had a date of March eleventh, but we need to change it.
January twenty, January twenty-ninth would be the next scheduled Select Board meeting.
So, it would be to extend until January twenty-ninth.
I would amend the motion to say January twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So we'll see you then. If you're not ready, then we'll just think about moving it again.
We'll go to the next piece. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Unanimous.
Thank you much. Nice to see everybody. Take care.
Take care. Okay, we will move into our next hearing, Wetlands Dock Hearing. Michael Tanio?
Tanyanos.
Tanyanos.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section two forty dash one four point eight Wetlands Regulations, the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, fifty-nine Town Hall Square, on the application of Michael Tenodius?
Tanyanos.
Tanyanos, for permission to construct a fixed pier that will extend approximately seventy-two feet seaward of mean high water into Charles River, located at eighty-six Edgewater Drive East, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Charles River. Interested parties may review the file on the hearing at the Office of the Select Board, per order of the Select Board. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Borcelli?
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, Michael Borcelli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. Mr. Tanyanos has applied for a special permit to reconstruct an existing dock at his property at eighty-six Edgewater Drive West. We have applied to you for this special permit only after filing with Conservation Commission and receiving a favorable order of conditions to allow credit to go forward. Part of your application package should include their order of conditions. The property, I'm sharing with you a aerial photo that shows the subject lot highlighted in orange. And there's a single-family dwelling on it. There's an existing pier. You see nearby existing piers on both sides of the water. This shows the extent of the waterway across Eel Pond. And the, the overall width of this pond is three hundred feet. And in the design of the pier, we were, the goal was to make the new pier more environmentally sensitive. The current pier is substandard to all of current requirements and regulations. And the extension that we're proposing is minor, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that we can't extend more than twenty-five percent across a water body, which the plan that we proposed does not. The actual plan that was approved by Conservation Commission shows the proposed pier being built directly over the, and in the same alignment as the existing pier. It's a fixed pier. The current one's supported by posts. The new pier will be also supported by posts as it crosses from the upland through the salt marsh, but then it'll be supported by timber pilings. And there'll be a T at the end where the boat would tie. The extension is about seventeen feet from the end of the existing pier. It's seventy-two feet from mean high water. That allowed for deeper water so that there's less potential prop wash from boats tying here. In addition to being cognizant of the maximum allowed width across the water body, we also, as we always do, and as a requirement of the Conservation Commission, reviewed the plan with the harbor master. And the harbor master commented and issued a memo that I will share here with you that says he has no issues with moorings, and he has no recommendations and no comments. So there's no issues in, with navigation as far as the harbor master is concerned. The pier is entirely fixed. It's similar to other piers you see me present. It's elevated. In this case, we've shown the existing pier. If you look closely, it's a lower profile. It's very close to the salt marsh surface, so the shading on the salt marsh, the recommendation actually from Division of Marine Fisheries is that you provide a six-foot separation from the salt marsh to the underside of the stringers that support the walkway. The existing one in no way meets that standard. The new one will. It's, so it's elevated over the salt marsh, and it's elevated so that there's public access underneath, which is also required by DEP, Division of Wetlands and Waterways. It starts in the upland, it bridges the salt marsh. There's two posts only that are in the salt marsh, two six-by-sixes. And then it ramps back down to a lower elevation at the very end, where the T, this T is located in the boat would tie on the end, parallel to shore. So this is typical, the water depth at the end is just over three feet. It's three, three and a half to four feet, which is good. There's no significant shellfish. There was a report submitted on that with the application to Conservation Commission. So, we think this meets all of the requirements and standards. If you were to vote favorably on this, we'd proceed with the balance of the permitting, which is Chapter ninety-one at the state level next. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. Borcelli, could you bring that other picture of the, the color photo?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, is, where that's depicted there, is that one of the most narrow parts of that waterway?
Where this is depicted, it's actually not one of the narrowest parts. It's just seaward of, there's a narrower section.
Right.
Further in, but directly across this section is one of the wider sections.
Well, that leads me to my next question. The twenty-five percent that you, you said that you can encompass. Does, does float and the boat tied to the float count into that twenty-five percent out into the waterway?
By the regulation, it's only the structure that...
So, but the float and the boat running laterally on the flo, on the float will...
Well, there's no float. The T, the fixed T is, is part of the seventy-two. The only part that isn't is the beam of the boat.
Okay.
And the beam of the boat's like eight feet. It's a center console.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions from the board? Any comments from the public regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
She'll move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Conversation amongst the board?
My only question was the amount of crossing, whether or not we were underneath that twenty-five percent rule. Mr. Borcelli provided the station to confirm that it was, so I would move approval.
Seems, seems an improvement to what's there, there currently.
And if you would, Mr. Brown, please, if, read the motion that you choose.
Pad doesn't scroll very quickly.
You can look on mine if you want.
I make a motion to approve Michael Tanyanos' application to construct a fixed pier extending approximately seventy-two feet seaward of mean high tide into the Charles River, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call.
Zelinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll move into business. Update on county grants and programs available to Falmouth homeowners, upgrading septic systems in line with state Title V regulations. Mr. Gessen. I've slated you for ten minutes.
Should be quicker than that.
All right.
As we even heard tonight, Falmouth is facing a housing crisis.
Don't forget to introduce us.
Oh, yes.
Tell us what you're here representing.
Of course. Eager to jump into it. Dan Gessen, Spoyset Road, and I also represent Falmouth on the County Assembly. And I'm here today to talk about the Aqua Fund and some other county resources that are available to homeowners dealing with septic system replacement. So, as, as I was saying, and as we've heard tonight, Falmouth is dealing with a housing crisis. It's becoming nearly impossible for year-round working people in our community to compete with seasonal homeowners, and it's driving up the cost of living, and for many, it's only getting worse. At the same time, Falmouth is dealing with a wastewater catastrophe due to decades of environmental degradation. And this means at a time when we can least afford it, many in our community are paying a steep price. I'm going to be reviewing some resources available from the county to help homeowners in need, and you all have been doing good work in town to address the wastewater issue. But I'll also underscore that what's currently available is simply not enough, and it's on us as leaders in town to continue ringing the alarm bell and find creative solutions to help the most vulnerable in our community. The program I'm here to talk about, as I've said, is the Aqua Fund. Originally, it was known as the Community Septic Management Loan Program. It's changed a lot over the last several years to adapt to the growing need that's developed on Cape Cod. The new Title V regulations, which went into effect six months ago, mandate that homeowners in impacted areas, either on the town level or individually, upgrade their septic system or connect to sewers. Of the thirty impacted areas located between Falmouth and Orleans, covering more than eighty-six thousand homes, fourteen of them, that's almost half, are located here in Falmouth. Beyond the incredible cost of the town, hooking up to a sewer or upgrading to a Title V system can cost anywhere from ten to thirty-six thousand dollars a home. For many homeowners, that may be an insurmountable burden that threatens to put them, both literally and figuratively, underwater on their wastewater bills. The Aqua Fund is a Barnstable County program that provides low-to-zero-interest betterment loans to Cape Cod homeowners faced with the cost of repairing or replacing failed septic systems, upgrading to alternative systems, as well as connecting to municipal sewers. The loans cover the entire cost of the upgrade and can be paid back over twenty years. This can be a lifeline for homeowners facing this large expense. In my mind, one of the best aspects of the program is that it prioritizes year-round residents and sets interest rates based on household income. That means the low rates are available to everyone, but for families making below a hundred eighty percent of area median income, the rate can be as low as two percent. And for families at or below one hundred twenty percent of area median income, they can pay no interest whatsoever over the course of their twenty-year loan. That's more than half of Cape Cod families eligible for zero percent interest loans for sewer connections and septic upgrades. Falmouth residents who need to upgrade their system can apply directly through the county website at capecod.gov. The application takes minutes and can be approved in as little as forty-eight hours. I really truly encourage any homeowner in the community trying to figure out how they will afford a sewer connection, to check out the Aqua Fund and see how it can help you. And if you know someone in the community who is struggling under the added expense of meeting these new requirements, let them know about the Aqua Fund. This is a really great program, one that has already given out more than fifty-two million dollars in loans over the lifetime, and will continue to benefit the people of Cape Cod for decades to come, and I hope many people in Falmouth. Programs like these make a huge difference, not only because they help those who really need it, but because when it comes to approving new infrastructure projects at town meeting, the community can rest assured that we're not leaving residents high and dry with nowhere to turn to. However, there's still more work to be done. Even at a zero percent rate, upgrading septic systems can cost hundreds of dollars a month for decades. That's yet another expense on top of rising grocery bills, mortgages, and student loan payments that are increasingly making Cape Cod unlivable for young and working people. That's why I'm proposing that the county use five million dollars of its twenty-eight million dollar surplus to further bolster the Aqua Fund, so that we can ensure that it stays as a sustainable and self-sufficient resource for decades to come, so that the county can make sure that we, that we expand the availability of these zero percent loans to multifamily dwellings, which is often accessible to the lowest-income Cape Codders. And we need to find a sustainable way to develop loan forgiveness for families in our community that need it the most. Over the last several months, I've worked hard to build support behind this initiative in the County Assembly, and now the ball is in the County Commissioners Court. I need your help as leaders in the community and citizens of Cape Cod to make it known that expanding resources for wastewater and making the region more affordable and welcoming to people who work here, and make it what it is, is something we care about and are willing to fight for here in Falmouth.
Great.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Brown?
No, I just, thanks to Dan for bringing this to us and reminding us to support this initiative. Also, that the rules have just changed on the tax incentives for this, where you used to be able to write off up to six thousand dollars worth of investment off your taxes, and now it's eighteen thousand, which is a lot more helpful. So that's another good, another good aspect of this new initiative, so.
Dan, thank you for your great work. Is there, is there a, where can the general public get some more information or be able to, to get this presentation? Is it on a website? Do you have a...
This presentation in of itself? I'm not sure. I mean, I sent it to the Select Board, but I think the best resource is really capecod.gov. You're going to be able to access everything about the Aqua Fund there, as well as the application portal and all the eligibility requirements.
The reason I say that is you did such a great job describing it and what you were doing. I thought it would be beneficial if, you know, you want to start early. You want to get people's attention early, right?
Yep, absolutely.
So, maybe something you want to think about.
Mr. Mascali?
Yeah, thank you, Dan, for all the good work you're doing for, for the county and for the town. Does, does the system have to be failing or have failed for a homeowner to be able to access this? Let's just say that the homeowner thought he, it was, it's an old system, it's passing, but he or she or they wanted to improve it. Is that available for them, or does it have to have failed?
No. So, the old program, the Community Septic Loan Management, that was just for failing septic systems. So when it got rebranded as the Aqua Fund, that's where they really changed it to adapt the new Title V regs. So anyone connecting to a sewer can use the program, anyone updating to a new Title V Regulation septic system can use it. It doesn't just have to be a failing system.
Even if they were increasing the size of the number of bedrooms in their house?
Yep.
Thank you.
Nice.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Madam Chair?
Of course, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Scott Price.
Thank you. Mr. Gessen, I just want to say great work on this. You're showing really great leadership in this position, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Appreciate it, and thank you very much for your support in it. I think it's going to be important that we bring it over the finish line.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
For ourselves, can we send a letter in support of this, or does that have to be another agenda item?
I think another, I would recommend an agenda item.
I would as well.
We could certainly drop something.
It would need a vote.
I'd like to support it.
I can send along some information if that'd be helpful. Mr. Brown?
Great.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, we're going to go to business number two, and the next three items are all around the Conservation Commission. So I would ask Ms. Lincoln to lead us through them, please.
Hello, Jennifer Lincoln, Conservation Administrator. The next three agenda items are related to a request to approve funding sources for the purchases of two conservation restrictions on fifty acres of woodland in North Falmouth. The property in question is being acquired by the Three Hundred Committee, and this would allow the town to be a partner with the T three C, as we have on several other open space acquisitions. With me tonight is Jessica, Jessica Rittenhour, Executive Director of the Three Hundred Committee, and Leonard Johnson, longstanding board member of the Three Hundred Committee, to give you an overview of their acquisition project.
Good evening. Hi, for the record, I'm Jessica Rittenhour. I'm the Executive Director of the Three Hundred Committee Land Trust, and I'm pleased to have Leonard Johnson joining me this evening from our Board of Directors and from our Land Acquisition Committee. We realize there are several agenda items. What we think would be best is we're going to have a very brief overarching presentation to cover the points of all three, so that you only have to, you know, hear our presentation once, and then I'll make general remarks. Leonard has some remarks in context of North Falmouth and the Falmouth community, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. I do have on this flash drive the maps that were included with the memo. Are they already on the computer system, Peter, or should I show them from here? It would be with the packet that Jen submitted on behalf of the Conservation Department?
I think we just loaded the presentation.
Great, okay. So, it would be up? Okay, so how can I access that? Thank you for the technical support.
No, it's okay. I'm not 100% sure if it's there. If it is...
If not, I have it right here.
See food, budget, budget. No, I don't see it.
Okay, so I'll put this in. Thanks for your patience. Okay. I'm good, thank you. Great. Okay, so I do have it on one other file. I'll try that one.
I haven't seen it. It almost looked like it was trying to load.
Okay, North Falmouth Woodlands Maps. We'll try them here. Okay, great. So, this evening, we'll overview the overall purpose of the project. What are we doing and why? The role of the 300 Committee as landowner, potential future landowner, and the Conservation Commission as the conservation restriction holder, and just a few highlights on the conservation values. First, we like to orient folks as to where we're talking about. This is a significantly sized property in Falmouth. We have very few 56-acre properties that are intact. This property is located near the North Falmouth Elementary School. It's currently owned by LTC LLC. That is, the LLC is owned by Ruth and Stephen Augusta. They purchased the property in June of 2023, and we have been in talks with Ruth and Stephen since shortly after the time period when they purchased the property. As far as the 300 Committee is concerned, this property was identified as a priority for conservation in the very early days of the 300 Committee. We're talking 1985, when the organization was formed with the purpose of permanently protecting open space in all areas of Falmouth. Our work is a matter of timing. Our work is a matter of when properties become available and when owners are interested and willing to sell. And the opportunity for the 300 Committee to finally, you know, secure a purchase and sale agreement for this property happened in 2023. So, we're thrilled to have the opportunity. It will mean the permanent conservation of nearly 50 acres of land abutting the North Falmouth School. Also, seven and a half acres of the site is going to be set aside for development of affordable housing by a nonprofit developer. We are in talks now with Habitat for Humanity and intend to execute a purchase and sale agreement so that they can purchase from the 300 Committee seven and a half acres for affordable housing development. We feel this is, it's a wonderful opportunity for collaboration, and we like the work that Habitat has done in the community. So, while tonight we're focusing in on the state grant and the community preservation opportunities for the open space conservation, we feel it's really important to share the big picture, is that we want open space and affordable housing to be able to work in a collaborative fashion with site planning. This is a very sensitive site. As we go through the maps and illustrate some of the conservation values, you'll see this here, the PH 238, that means priority habitat. I think the 238 is probably the state's numbering system, but what this means is the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program has identified this property as a very high priority for conservation. In this case, it's due to the box turtle habitat, which is an endangered species, and any development would have to be balanced out with open space mitigation. Again, the partnership, open space and housing, we think would work well together here. But it is a very sensitive, environmentally fragile site. We do have some existing open space in the area. This map, again, puts the property in context. We have some additional lands that the town has helped purchase. The Florence Sylvia Woodland is nearby. I think I can show where that is here. These parcels are owned by Salt Pond Bird Sanctuaries. There's a variety of other smaller open space parcels. I think the number-one recreational resource nearby is the Shining Sea Bikeway. So, that's certainly a wonderful resource in the area, but part of this project and part of what the state is looking for is, you know, additional passive recreational opportunities, and this would provide that with an extensive trail system and hopefully some nice features that would add to the North Falmouth Elementary School and some outdoor learning opportunities. So, those are the kinds of opportunities we would like to be able to provide above and beyond the land conservation piece. Again, recreational resources, I believe that's what this map is depicting, and this is all really critical information for the state, because they're going to want to see the context of what is Falmouth preserving and, you know, how does it relate to other resources in the community? We do have an environmental justice population nearby, and all of this is, again, mapped through the state, and so what the state is looking for from the 300 Committee and the Conservation Commission would be enhanced outreach to ensure that we're letting the community know about this opportunity. So, what that means is that we would be certainly sending notifications out before the April town meeting far and wide, so that folks know that at precinct meetings, there will be a warrant article discussed, because the Community Preservation Committee is recommending funding for this. But the state would like to see that we're making efforts to let the community know about the opportunity that the town will have to potentially invest community preservation funds in this acquisition. Wetlands, Joanne Miramoto, who's our Board President, has spent a lot of time heading our Land Acquisition Committee, at least a couple of decades, but part of her work with our organization is helping us really to document the conservation values. And one of the things that Joanne has noted is the significance of the wetlands that are here, also a certified vernal pool. So, again, really important natural resource protection opportunity for the town. It's also prime forest habitat, and I think this is the last map I'm going to illustrate here, the prime farmland soil. So, with any project, we always wish to document the conservation values in terms of what the state is looking for. For the Falmouth community, the goal that has been published in our open space plan and our local comprehensive plan is to permanently protect up to 30, or 30%, rather, of Falmouth's land area. We have around 23% permanently protected, and I think the vision that the 300 Committee shares with the town, and we've discussed this for years, is open space throughout Falmouth. We don't want to focus on any one village area. It's really important that we have an equitable distribution of open space throughout the town. Certainly, when we have opportunities of this size, we want to seize them, and I think this is a wonderful win-win. Speaking for just a moment about the role of the 300 Committee and the town, we've had a variety of projects where the 300 Committee decides to purchase a property, and we're looking at a potential of private fundraising. In this case, the private fundraising would be north of $2.5 million, $2.5 to $3 million. The public funding that we're seeking is the $3 million, and that was the subject of the Community Preservation Grant. The $3 million would be a purchase price for the conservation restrictions. This is because the state and the Community Preservation Act requires that the town acquire an interest in real estate when community preservation or when the state land grant or land and water conservation funds are used. We have a very robust stewardship program at the 300 Committee, and we're willing to own and manage and take care of this property. We believe the conservation restriction, as the real estate interest that the town would hold, has much less... There's certainly a responsibility in overseeing it, but the day-to-day stewardship is handled by the 300 Committee and the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Department handles annual monitoring of the conservation restriction. As we've progressed through the years, this is the model that tends to work well with ownership and then the town holding the conservation restriction, and it's just on a project-to-project basis, but that was the model that we thought would be best here. That means the 300 Committee is responsible for maintaining the trail system, establishing the trail system, and staying in touch with the Conservation Department on any, you know, potential issues. I think I should close my remarks and allow Leonard to share a few of his insights, and...
Let's just see if there are any questions from the board to you. Mr. Muscally?
Just one question. Could you show where the seven and a half acre parcel?
Yes, I can. I think if I scroll up, bear with me. It's off of Benjamin Nye's Lane. Kelly, am I on the... Kelly Grant from the Compact of Conservation Trust, our consultant, is here who actually prepared these maps for us. I believe I'm hovering over it. Kelly, can you confirm that? Yeah.
So, it's not within the...
It's...
It's not within that 50 acres or that red...
Exactly.
It's outside of that.
It's, so we're buying 57 and a half acres, of which we are highlighting the 50 acres that we want the state, but it's, yeah, it's a direct, directly abutting property.
And that property has access to...
It has existing access off of Benjamin Nye Lane. There's an existing home that, so this would be a Habitat for Humanity redevelopment. They'd have to modify the existing interest, you know, do their site planning, but there's an existing residential structure that's there that unfortunately is not in a condition for retrofitting, but we're working to review their site planning and all of those details. But yes, an existing residential use already there. Thanks for that question.
I don't have really a question, but I would comment that I think this is a great model for partnering with the 300 Committee to provide some affordable housing, as well as, you know, create open space opportunities. So, I hope we can maybe make this a model going forward and find if there's other properties around. Maybe you're not going to find another 50-acre site, but maybe something along these lines in the future would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
My name is Leonard Johnson. As Jessica said, I've been a longstanding member of the 300 Committee Board, and of significance tonight, I'm a 40-year, year-round resident of North Falmouth. And our mission has always been, in the 300 Committee, to preserve land throughout the town, and North Falmouth has been a little short in this, but now we're rectifying that problem. As Jessica's mentioned, this has been on our radar from the very beginning, and we now have found a willing seller, which always makes our life much easier, although we are paying market rate for this property. Since Little Pond Landing in 2010, which was a combined, really the model Doug's talking about a model, that was the original model of a combined open space affordable housing project. We have been trying diligently since then to come up with another one, and I can't really say we've been to the altar, but we've gotten in the church, but we haven't made it to the altar. And so, we've been outbid on several occasions, working in partnership with a local affordable housing group. But we are making progress, and tonight, we're asking you, in relation to the open space, the affordable housing process will come to you in the future. That's not what we're asking you to vote on tonight. And as Jessica's described, the 7.5 acres is a natural part of this property to be developed for affordable housing. It has already been disturbed. That's our language, at least. It means that there's already been, it's not, it's not wild. It's that section that, off of Benjamin Nye Lane, is, which will be the access there, has already had a house on it and a garage and a large barn. It's probable that the entrance to the conservation land will be off Quaker Road, so that we can avoid confusion of people going in, going in on the Benjamin Nye into the affordable housing and then finding parking for, they're walking on the pass or using the conservation area. And so, it'll probably be off of Quaker Road between a couple of those vernal pools that Jessica showed earlier. We're pleased that we understand that the state agencies who will be involved in this funding process are looking favorably on these joint projects. They've had, they haven't had very many of them. This will be the first one on the Cape, and maybe the second one on the Cape, because we're actually working on another one. But this leads us to believe that the funding from the state will be, will be in hand. So, thank you for listening to us, and we hope you'll vote favorably on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So, our first one is to approve the Conservation Commission application to the Community Preservation Committee for Community Preservation Act funds.
I would move that we approve the Conservation Commission grant application to Community Preservation Act.
Okay, I have a motion, and I think maybe we want to say, motion to approve the application to the Community Preservation Act for funding in the amount of $3 million for the purchase of two conservation restrictions on the proposed North Falmouth Woodland property being acquired by the 300 Committee Land Trust.
Well, I'll second that.
As amended, as amended second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski abstention.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. So, we have four yea and one abstention. Okay, our second piece is approve Conservation Commission grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Anyone like to move that?
Looking for the motion here.
Okay.
The next section. Let's move, scrolling. Okay.
You'd like me to read it?
Page 120.
Yeah, here it is, Doug.
All right. That's, no, that's not it. That's... Well, if you, yeah, you want to go ahead.
Conservation Commission recommends that the Select Board approve its request to make an application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund in the amount of $1 million for the purpose of reimbursing the Community Preservation Act.
I would make that a motion as read by the Chair.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Zalinski abstention.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, we have four ayes and one abstention.
And I'll just comment that for the folks at home, the reason for that is that this is a potential reimbursement to the CPC through another grant opportunity.
Yes, we've approved the application, and if they get the application, they can refund, it looks like, from the state. Okay, let's move on to the third. Approved Conservation Commission grant application... I'm sorry, I'm reading the same one. Approved Conservation Commission application to local acquisition for the Natural Diversity L A N D Grant Program.
And this is the same explanation, that if it is possible to secure the state grant, then we'll reimburse to the CPC. And I'll make a motion to authorize and approve the Conservation Commission to submit two applications to the local acquisitions for Natural Diversity Land Grant Program for grant funding in the amount of $500,000, each in order to reimburse the Community Preservation Act, only to be submitted in the event its application to the Land/Water Grant Fund for the amount of $1 million is unsuccessful. So, this is a backup plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
And Zalinski abstain.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Again, we have four ayes and one abstention. Okay, we will, we will go to business number five. Request from the 300 Committee for a conservation restriction for a 1.9-acre portion of this land on the property owned by Catherine Truman at 78 Benjamin Nye's Way, Nye's Lane, North Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw? Is there anything you'd like to add about that one?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can walk through some of the, some of the bullets, the background. 300 Committee Land Trust Incorporated submitted its request for a 1.9-acre conservation restriction via letter dated December 21, 2023. Copy of that letter... via letter dated December 21st, 2023. Copy of that letter is included in your packets this evening. The Conservation Commission then issued a letter of support for the conservation restriction back on October 27th of 2022. The 1.9 acre portion of the property includes a deciduous wood swamp wetland, which provides a valuable habitat for a very diverse array of wildlife species. Madam Chair and Board, I'm recommending that the Select Board approve this request for a conservation restriction on the 1.9 acre portion of land on the property owned by Catherine Truman at 78 Benjamin Nye's Lane as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I do have one question on, what's the reason why we need this separately? And it's not part of the property, if I could. Is it just a separate piece of land or?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Kelly Grant. I'm land protection specialist, working with the 300 Committee. Sorry, what was the question?
Just, just want to make sure I understand. Why is this 1.9 acres on the same property a separate request rather than in with the rest of the conservation area?
From, from the earlier agenda item, or this is a separate property at 78 Benjamin Nye's Lane, so it's a...
Oh, it's, I see. It's not part of that property.
Yeah, it's just on the same road.
Oh, okay.
Coincidence, yeah.
Okay.
So it's a portion of a, a separate residential property where they're protecting part of the parcel of the conservation.
I see, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
If I can find it, I'll make the motion.
These restrictions are really long.
I move that we approve the request for a conservation restriction on the 1.9 acre portion of land on property owned by Catherine Truman at 78 Benjamin Nye's Lane as presented.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Zalinski abstention.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. So we have four ayes and one abstention. Okay, we will move on to the application for a new second-hand dealer license. Boutique on the Byway located at 47 North Main Street in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant, Ms. Leah Benson, submitted the license application back on December 26th of 2023. Per the application review form, which is included as part of the board packet tonight, the owner was not aware of the need for a second-hand license. The Falmouth Police Department has reviewed her application and has no concerns or issues reported. And Madam Chair and Board, a town background check is pending with an anticipated completion date of January 10th, which is a couple of days from today.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
I thought the packet was pretty clear, and I would move approval unless anybody else has...
With the contingent of the background check, right?
I would ask that we do a contingency on the background check.
Yes, I tried to get the fingerprints done a couple of weeks ago. I've actually been fingerprinted before. Hi, I'm Leah Benson from the Boutique on the Byway. I had called several times to get an appointment with the police department to do the fingerprints. I've actually been fingerprinted before, because I was in the mortgage business for several years. I didn't know if that carried over into a different business. But they couldn't accommodate me with an appointment before the meeting tonight. I was trying to get that done before the meeting, and it didn't happen. But I'm going on the 10th.
Okay.
To get those done, and I'm sure that they're fine.
So, Mr. Brown, would you state your motion again with the contingency, please?
Okay, I'm motion to approve the issuance of a new second-hand dealer license for Boutique on the Byway located at 47 North Main Street in Falmouth. Contingent on the background check being sufficiently...
Second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
I'm good to go.
Good luck with the new shot.
Come buy some clothes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we will move, move to, vote to adopt the FY 2025 budget and submit to the Finance Committee. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, this is my first operating budget process. I was very much impressed. A lot of people to thank, the entire finance team, Assistant Town Manager. Everybody came together as a group to put together what I think is a very strong, proposed, recommended budget. As you all know, the charter requires that the Select Board vote to transmit the budget to the Finance Committee prior to January 16th of each year, in order for the Finance Committee to perform its detailed review. Those meetings are already being scheduled between Finance Committee members and the department heads. The proposed FY 25 budget is balanced and based on a very conservative revenue estimate. Madam Chair and Select Board, as you also know, inflationary pressures have created a really significant challenge this year. And as examples of this challenge, our state-regulated retirement assessment is increasing by over 6%, which amounts to an increase from FY 24 of about $680,032. Property and liability insurance, we're not immune to those increases as well, is budgeted for a 12% increase, representing $226,600 of increase. Following a very favorable electricity contract, our costs are now projected to increase by 35% over the next couple of years. Our solid waste contractual costs, and this is something that we're projecting and expecting, the solid waste contractual costs are increasing by 9% or $436,000. And Madam Chair and Select Board, while the overall 2025 budget is a significant increase from FY 24 of about 5.76% overall increase, I do believe, as your Town Manager, that it addresses multiple strategic priority areas identified by the Select Board through its FY 23, FY 27 strategic plan. And importantly, I believe it's representative of the true cost associated with operating a 21st century municipal government. Madam Chair, I do have an update, and actually something that I want to run by the Select Board tonight. Way back, as we were preparing articles for the town meeting, November Town Meeting, staff and I had been looking at opportunities. And one opportunity that I want to highlight, and it was actually asked, I think, Select Board Member Mascali asked back on December 18th, if there's any requests that weren't funded as part of this budget. There was, there was one, and one in particular that I want to outline tonight. But importantly, I want the Select Board to know, and the community to know, that it is actually something that staff and I were looking at hard, based upon creating the November Town Meeting warrants. And this position is the solid waste coordinator, a valuable position, as you all know. It was actually included in some draft article language. Unfortunately, we had five and a half new positions that November Town Meeting voted to approve. I, as the Town Manager, didn't feel that we had enough room, so we decided in my discretion to keep that off. I'm telling you this all tonight because I want to readdress tonight with your permission and kind of guidance to move forward with it. We have a plan that we believe strongly will fund moving, transitioning the solid waste coordinator position from its current part-time to a full-time status. It's going to require some effort, some additional work by the finance team, myself and the Assistant Town Manager, as well as human resources. As you may know, we're very fortunate in Falmouth to have access to grant funds. In keeping with the theme of looking for alternative revenue sources, trying to fund different opportunities with the town, keeping with that theme, we've identified a potential source of funding. We're still working through the details. But the RDP grants, which is the, I'm going to mess up the acronym.
Recycling Dividends Program.
Thank you, Recycling Dividends Program. The RDP grant opportunity is an opportunity that we believe is going to allow us to, to, to fully fund that, moving that position from part-time to full-time for a period of five years. Typically, it's only a two-year period. We have actually, through some research that Peter McConerty and Ed Centel, our Finance Director, have kind of researched and dug up, we're actually able to extend that ability to leverage those grant funds for a five-year period if we slightly modify the job description by adding some enforcement and some other duties assigned to that position. So we've done that. We're going to have a draft job description, adding those additional elements. And that enforcement component will allow that, the town to leverage and access those grant funds, the RDP grant funds, for a five-year period versus a two-year period. I think that's important because it's our plan, if the Board gives, gives us direction to go forward with this, to begin much, much, much earlier than the five-year period, we're going to look to transition, looking to leverage ways that the incumbent, the current solid waste coordinator, can basically add value, identify reductions in cost, expenses, associated with solid waste management. You've heard a lot of great information about composting and diverting certain elements from the landfill. We think that's an element or an area where the solid waste coordinator can, can make a lot of headway in terms of reducing those solid waste management costs. And also looking at increasing revenues, fees and whatnot. So those two kind of factors working hand in hand. I'm hoping literally within the first three years, we can identify revenues or reduce expenses equivalent to offsetting the additional cost. And that delta, just in the salaries, is about $31,000, $32,000. So not a significant amount of money. But I want the, to Select Board to know that we have a plan going forward. Again, thanks to Peter McConerty and Ed and the Assistant Town Manager and HR, kind of working together collaboratively. I think we've got a solid plan.
That's encouraging.
I would certainly strongly support your, your moving forward in that direction.
I would certainly too, and thank you for that. Appreciate the creativity there.
And relooking at it.
That's, thank you very much. That, that is the one position, again, based upon some comments from the December 18th meeting, where we were asked, you know, elements that were requested but did not make the Town Manager's recommended budget proposal. That is one key, key thing that was asked for that wasn't funded. But there was a history, and I thought that was important that the Select Board knows. We're looking at this hard in the fall. It just didn't make that cut for the November Town Meeting.
I'm all in too.
And after that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have with regards to the FY 25 budget. Again, the purpose of tonight's meeting, I'm going to be requesting Select Board vote to, to transmit, move the FY 25 operating budget to the Finance Committee.
I had several questions, and all of them were answered really, really well. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Very clearly presented. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Scott Price.
I also sent in several questions to Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and was very pleased with the answers I received. So thank you, and especially thank you for working on that so quickly.
Do we need any action to make a positive vote on moving forward the solid waste position? Or is that something that's already in the works?
I think it was consensus. Consensus and giving the Town Manager direction.
This is more an update, an update to the Board that we're looking at.
And I think, I think the consensus was everyone agrees that we would like to direct him to move forward with considering that plan.
That's my feeling, yes. But I do request a motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Scott Price.
Yeah, I just want to, on record, that I, I also concur that I think this is a great idea. And that was one of the questions that I had asked in the email that I sent to the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. So thank you.
And I think we will vote to, at some point, take a vote on moving it forward to the FinCom. But I do, I know there was one person that wanted to ask a question about the budget. Sir, do you still have that question? Oh, go ahead.
So, yeah, I, well, I'd like to thank you two for all the support that, oh, Dan Parra, Kean, Senator Hauser Lane, and Falmouth. And, yeah, we appreciate in the schools, all the support the town gives over the years. It does feel like this budget might come up a little short in terms of full staffing of schools. Continue to make sure that we're retaining young teachers, professional status teachers who are potentially going to be let go, and we're going to see departments or positions reduced because of inadequate funding. I think we live in a, a very wealthy town. There's a lot of resources to tap into. And I don't think there's any reason why teachers who, who have dreamed of working in Falmouth Public Schools or are really liking it and don't want to be let go. I'm not in this position, thankfully, but it is on people's minds. And I don't think it's something we should have happening. I think we can really pull something better together, hopefully. I don't know what the status is of sending this forward tonight, but I think there's time before June to, to dig deeper and, and make sure that we can, we can retain teachers. It's, it's hard to attract people to a place with high cost of living, very expensive housing. And I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't take young teachers for granted.
Thank you. And, and I'm going to make a suggestion to you, and that is that you bring your, your comments to the school committee. The school committee is the governing body for the, the school's budget.
Yeah, I was, I was planning to, but I figured.
I think that would be the, as equally as important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't we, I think we increased, I think we increased the school budget by 2.73 million or something like that?
They, they did receive an incredible increase. And, and how that is parsed out comes under the school committee and not under us. Which is why I'm saying it may be more appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's more like their management.
Yes.
Or whatnot. I mean, it's not something we're really privy to, their management structure. So can't really comment on that, but I will say we've...
Well, I don't think they would say no to more.
I'm just saying we've really significantly...
We gave them, yes.
A lot.
Madam Chair, it was about $2 million.
And how that is spent is, is under the guise of the school committee and the superintendent. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Chair, you looking for a motion?
I just want to make sure I don't have any other comments. Okay.
Was it the motion that you were looking for was for the whole budget, or was there another item?
No, it's, I believe it's to vote to adopt the FY 25 budget and to submit it to the FinCom.
That's my, I was going to move that.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Unanimous. And again, I would like to just thank you all for the work on this budget. I think it is really, really well done.
Seems to get better every year. Ed? Nice job.
Well done. Okay, we're going to move on to annual license renewals for 2024. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, this evening, there are two. The below-listed licensees have submitted all the renewal requirements on the checklist, and the licenses are ready to be approved for renewal for this current year, 2024. Under the category of used car dealer license, Excel Auto Sales and Repair, 94 East Falmouth Highway. And Madam Chair and Board, there's a note, the licensee was dealing with some health issues and was unable to file until December 28th. That's one of the reasons for having this on tonight's agenda. And secondly, and lastly, under the category of automatic amusement device, shipwrecked 263 Grand Avenue. This was due to administrative oversight, which was discovered after our December 18th meeting, which is why we're bringing this forward to the Board tonight. It's my recommendation, Madam Chair, that the Board approve the annual license renewals for both of these businesses.
We take them one at a time, or we take them both?
They're, as published in the agenda. I think you could, you could make, make that as a motion.
As published in the agenda, yeah.
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the license renewals for 2024 as described by the Town Manager and posted in the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I will read through the consent agenda. If any Board member would like to hold any item, please notify me. Licenses. Application for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license, West Falmouth Library at 525 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Wednesday, 131, 24, 6 to 8. Application for a special one-day all-alcohol beverages license, Falmouth Theater Guild at 58 High Field Drive, Falmouth, Friday through Sunday, February 2 through 4, Friday through Saturday, February 9 through 10, and Friday through Sunday, February 16 through 18, 2024. Administrative orders. Vote project eligibility letter for 24-unit housing proposal at 19th North Falmouth Highway. Accept grand award from the Falmouth Road Race, Inc. in the amount of $2,350 to the Harbor Masters Office for, to purchase a replacement automated external defibrillator. Accept grand award from the Falmouth Road Race, Inc. for the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle, ATV, to be used and maintained by the Public Works Water Division.
I would just hold that for a comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. D, accept donation from Hilton Riley in the amount of $1,050 to the Falmouth Cultural Council. And E, application for coastal zone management coastal resilience grant. And E, application for coastal zone management coastal resilience grant for FY 25, Eel River Inlet Widening. Okay, we have one hold, Mr. Brown?
Just wanted to hold that to say thank you to the Falmouth Road Race Group for funding not only the defibrillator, but also this vehicle for MES, I mean, I think that's really another example of how they're serving the town with their, their good work, so thanks to the Falmouth Road Race for that.
And also thank you to Hilton Railey in the, for her do-nation to the Falmouth Cultural Council.
Absolutely.
I will entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Ms. Scali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye, unanimous, thank you. Okay, let's take a look at the minutes, review and vote to approve minutes of meeting public session December 18th, 2023. Any comments?
I don't think I have any comments on it.
Any edits, did people have an opportunity to take a close look at them?
Good. I wouldn't call it close.
Close as a relative.
Sorry.
It certainly looked okay to me.
OJ.
Did you have an opportunity to read the minutes, Ms. Scott Price?
I did, but I can't look on them, I wasn't there, correction.
That's right.
Right.
Looking for a motion, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Are you looking for a motion then?
Of course.
I would make a motion to approve minutes of meeting December 18th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the meeting, meeting minutes of December 18th, 2023, any further discussion amongst the board?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Ms. Scali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price abstained.
Taylor, aye. Four ayes, one abstention, we'll move on to the Town Manager's supplemental report, Mr. Renshaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, three quick updates, announcements, meeting announcements, if you will. The organization No Place for Hate Falmouth is hosting this year's Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday Breakfast on Monday, January 15th, from 9 o'clock until 11 o'clock a.m. The event will take place at the Seacrest Resort in North Falmouth. Tickets are $30 for adults, $15 for students, and the deadline for advanced ticket sales is January 11th. Tickets may be purchased at the No Place for Hate Falmouth website at www.npfhfalmouth.org. Space is limited, and tickets will be sold at the door only if space is available, for $35 adults and $20 students. Madam Chair and Board, this year's speaker is Manuel Fernandez, Chief Equity Officer, Cambridge Public Schools, and DEIB leader. The topic of the discussion will be fostering equity and inclusion in the community. Second meeting announcement or reminder I wanted to make is that on Wednesday, this Wednesday, January 10th, there will be a second public meeting being held to gather input from the public to assist the town with drafting a new housing production plan. The meeting will take place at the Falmouth High School's Cafeteria A, and there's a note, for those interested in participating, and I'd encourage everybody to participate, use door number two to get to access Cafeteria A. The meeting is from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. There will be a brief presentation going over the input that was received at the first public meeting that was held back on November 8th. Following that, participants will gather around various table stations with boards that will outline multiple goals and strategies, and ask the attendees for their comments and suggestions with regards to the housing production plan, we encourage the public to join us in this very important process. And lastly, on Tuesday, January 16th, there will be a community outreach meeting at the Senior Center from 5 to 6:30 p.m. to discuss the real estate transfer fee that the Select Board is considering added, adding for the Springtown meeting. There will be a presentation describing what the real estate transfer fee is, and why we are contemplating enacting it, followed by public comment and/or questions. We encourage, again, the public to attend and look forward to the public's input. And lastly, there's four or five Select Board meetings, I wanted to note, I think I've corrected this from last, the Select Board Planning Workshop is scheduled for Saturday, March 2nd, and that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Okay, we'll go to Select Board reports. Mr. Ms. Scott?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Come on.
It was a slow month.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
I, Saturday, I attended a workshop at the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce up in Tianis, and it was a common start, and that is an effort to get a bill passed to support additional funding for early daycare, you know, it was very interesting and concerning to hear that people were justifying in this meeting that when a lady gets pregnant on Cape Cod, they got to start looking for daycare on day one of pregnancy, or you're not going to find infant daycare, because you can wait a whole year or two years to get accepted in, because infants, they can only have one, between one and three years old, they can only have three per teacher, and it's interesting to me, I'm thinking of it as daycare, but really it's early education, which I was corrected on at the end of the meeting, because I mentioned, do you think you could watch four kids instead of three, trying to think of, you know, ways to be, make it more affordable? And one of the ladies who provides daycare said, Mr. Brown, I just want to make you understand that it's not just babysitting, we're teaching these kids, it's early education, and it's really important and it's vital, so it was, it was interesting for me.
It's a statute, isn't it, Doc?
Yeah, it's state, it's state mandate, yeah. I haven't really been paying attention to, I know Sandra Faiman Silva has been sending us a lot of information about it, and I've been kind of letting it go over my head, and I figured I better start paying attention, because it's something that's really important for young families to be able to afford to stay here, and there is a bill that I hope we can take an interest in and maybe support, because it's ongoing now, I don't have the bill number handy, but I can get it, forward it.
Great.
One more thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zalinski?
I officially start my tenure on the Metropolitan Planning Organization this month, so I'll have a report after that, this is my first meeting officially.
Oh, you know, I should report to the board also, I've been doing a little, kind of ad hoc homework project of looking into, I thought I was looking into electric trolley to work potentially on the train tracks from North Falmouth to Buzzards Bay. I finally got to speak with the COO of the MBTA, and he explained to me that it's not a trolley that I'm looking for, it's a train that is rated to be on the tracks, because there's safety procedures and so forth, but he quickly identified a couple of what's called BUD cars, which are self-contained, self-propelled, single cars, and he sent me a link with two of them, and one was really nice, it's secondhand, of course, it's 1953, but it's been somewhat refurbished, and it's an 80-foot vehicle, and seats almost between 70 and 80 people, depending on how they configure it. Just as the example, the one is for sale for about $700,000, and it has a little restroom in it and a food service preparation area, I don't know if we need all that, but I'm just saying this is the one that was an example. So I took the initiative to send that to the Chair of the Pedestrian and Bike Ways Committee, for them to just be advised that, you know, something that's an idea that maybe could go forward, so I asked them to think about it and share it with their friends from Born, and see if it's anything that they want to pursue further, in a sort of an interim attempt to make a connection between the Shining Sea Bike Way and the Canal Bike Way, because right now, it doesn't look good for the, the prospects for making that connection, so maybe this could be an interim step that could help us along.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The only thing that I would request is if you have agenda items for our March 2nd workshop, if you could send them directly to me, and I'll start looking through them, I have a bunch already, and there, there are suggestions that have come up before that we just have not had the opportunity to do a deep dive into, so please get those to me as quickly as possible.
Madam Chair, what's the timing we have on that, how much time do we have allocated that day, is it 9 to 2?
I, I don't remember exactly the time I put down, but it will be longer than our other workshops, because there are so many things that, that we just have not been able to get to, so the agenda's fairly heavy.
Maybe Mr. Renshaw could send out the draft of what is already proposed, and then we'll see if the things that are on there that we're interested, or if we should add to it.
I think I'm going to do it in reverse, I'm going to ask you to send yours, I have a lot of yours already that are on our list.
Okay.
So I would ask that people just send them, and then you'll get a draft prior, probably prior to the meeting, okay? Any, anything else from the board? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Ms. Scali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye, unanimous, thank you. Please remember, you've got some signatures that we need to-
Bye, OJ.
Have a good night.
Good night, y'all.